Hello everyone and welcome to another horrific review. I'm joined once again by Dale as we embrace the night with what we do in the shadows TV show. This is a documentary style look into the nightly resides of three vampires in Staten Island. Who have lived together for hundreds of years. Oh, it's so hard not to binge all this like.
Oh, it so was. Oh my gosh. So I was so glad when you said we're gonna do the sneaky one too. I was like, yes.
Yeah, because I think I think we could maybe bump up the three episodes with us as well. They're so quick.
They are, aren't they?
Uh, but I've forgotten how good this show was. I have watched, I think, the first three seasons of it. That's how far I got up to and. But it's been a couple of years, so it's good to go back and it's like.
God.
Just hilarious.
Good, eh? It's a good one. Very funny.
So it's uh, it's one of the writers. It's not Taika. It's the other guy who wrote the series. So he continued on.
Yeah, so Jermaine and.
Jermaine, that's the one, yes.
And Taika Waititi did have some uh, writing in this, but it was Jermaine that um, actually ended up directing it. So, so he did have input. He just wasn't in the show. I think that's because he was over in Hollywood at that time doing all the Marvel stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, 2018. Yeah, something like that.
So you can see the same tone. Sorry, sorry.
It's the same horror. It's the same humour, isn't it?
Hmm.
It's very much the same humour. Great.
They've tidied it up a little bit. It's not the, it's not the zeniness of the, the film.
No, no.
You're right. That's not a detraction from it. You know what I mean? It's uh. You can tell they're going a bit more long term with us. That's the thinking.
Yes, 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 definitely. Compared to the movie, um, definitely, hmm.
Yeah, I forgot how good this series was and just uh, it's great to get back into it. Um. So obviously we've got the first one, the pilot and. We're introduced to Guillermo and he's almost taken over. Taika's sort of the point of view character.
Yes.
He's the familiar, so. We'd get a little bit of the same jokes at the very beginning.
Yes, definitely.
But suppose how's he gonna start this? How else are you gonna start this? You know, it's a, it's a mockumentary, you know, it's that's the hell. So. Someone's gonna introduce the house and.
Yeah, perfectly well done. I thought that was really, really ingenious. I loved it. Yeah. Um, that, oh, it was just very similar to the movie, uh, wasn't it? The introduction of the, the house and the housemates and. Yeah, very much so. And the same flavour as the movie. Yeah, there were some good comical scenes there too.
Well, even the, even the coffin opening scene, you know.
Yeah, introduced and introducing Nando. Nando?
Nandor, the relentless.
Yeah, yeah, right. Isn't he great? Oh, that was such a good scene. Yeah. He's fast becoming my favourite, favourite character. Nandor.
It's to me, it's a toss up between him and Lazlo. Like they're so like big in each other, but. They're almost competing with each other anyway. That's their nature.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Their little fight scene they had in the um. At the um, group meeting, at the, the house flat meeting. That was. That was very much in flavour of the other, of the movie as well, you know. Coming up and fighting through the hallway and all that sort of, I thought that was great. And that the letter saying, oh my god, that was just ridiculous, but it was actually quite funny. I, I just, I don't know.
It's the overdramatization, you know, people, it's. I think we've talked about this before. They're nerds, you know, we're, we're just getting nerds and they're the sort of people that harken back to high school. When I was in high school, I was the big ding dong and now I'm not. And you kind of a Nandor, I was Nandor the relentless because I was relentless and blah blah, you know. As best as are behind him, so to speak.
Yeah, I know.
He's always living in that sort of era of, you know, his heyday, but.
Yeah.
Have progressed.
He's so super cool. And, and oh my gosh, to see Jermaine in there again, acting as um. Oh, god blimey, uh, Les, Leslow. Oh my goodness. He looks a little bit older now, doesn't he?
But they must have been really young. I didn't look it up. The first at this show, they were really young and like it's.
Well, I had to go back and have a look at photos because I was just so blown away that, that Jermaine had, well, had. I don't know, put on so much weight and he just looked a bit more American than he does New Zealand anymore, you know.
Cheeseburgers.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you know the American cheeseburgers get to? You get attacked in the street by cheeseburgers.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, they have gotten older a little, you know, quite a lot, but um, yeah, that was good. It's good. Jermaine's a cool actor. Yeah.
And yeah, we're introduced the hustle and Nadia and. Oh my god, they are.
Succubus vampires.
They're both perverts, like they're both absolute.
Total perverts.
Oh, there's Chris on. Hey man, uh, I'm over due a rewatch of the series again. Yeah, it's all, it's definitely rewatchable. It's definitely, you can go back and still laugh. It's just that sort of timeless humour.
Yeah, it's definitely not gonna date. No, it's just because it's something special to sing and that, that's just um. I could watch it 10 years from now and still have a good laugh.
I think that's a trick with that sort of thing because they're out of time. So they're not, you know, they could dress, dress in modern clothes and still look out of time. They'd look awkward. They could dress in nineties fashion. They would look awkward because that's just the sort of people. They are and there's always a relatability to that. And yeah, that means that 20 years from now. They would still be the same characters out of time and not understanding what's going on.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the way Nanja and Ninja and um, yeah. God, their names. Leslow. The way they dress is so Victorian or so Gothic, you know. It, it looks really cool.
But they're also, I think poking fun at golf culture, which is cool as well.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Especially when they go out in public. It's just like, oh my god, how the hell do they get away with it?
Well, that, that get called gossip, that's right. Go away. You go three jacks and somebody had a. Had a go at them or like munchy time.
Yeah. That's right. It was rather. The park.
But it's good to see they're using practical effects as well.
Yes.
Because you'd know that was just a ladder or a, uh, what do you call them? Cherry picker. It's just been held above camera length while they've dumped the bucket over the edge.
Yes, yes. That was well done. That was great.
And I'm like, but why not do that? Cause I, I'm a, I'm an activist. I want digital blood banned from movies and TV shows.
Yeah.
It's the most horrendous thing ever.
It is, it is. Does, does not work.
If I was to start one campaign, it would be that. Just ban digital blood because it's fucking awful.
Yeah, no, we do real blood over here.
Even the Stephen R doing the Hammer Horror series, even the red paint they use is better than digital blood.
Really?
Well, if you look at it, it's still, there's something physical visceral that drips, it lands and you just don't get that with.
Yeah, nothing can beat it, eh?
Even if it's badly done, it's still better than digital.
Yeah. Oh god, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but I just love that. He gets waked up in the trees and just fucking blood straight out.
I know. That scene was done so well, wasn't it? Just taken up. Woo, it's just real vampire stuff. What you'd expect from a good vampire flick. Yeah.
Absolutely. And it's just practical. Once again, that is just camera angles, setting the right thing up. And it's a bucket full of stuff, you know, and it's nothing spectacular. It's just somebody thinking about the shot and being clever. And yeah, it's a brief moment, but we're talking about it now, like.
Yeah, because it was a really good scene. Yeah.
You can still appreciate it and go, yeah, this is good. And that's, that's how you know. I think you're on to something when you see scenes of God.
Yeah.
And they could be done so badly and just knock her and you'd be like, yeah, okay, not feeling it.
Absolutely. Yeah. No, it was done really, really well. Added a bit of gore in there as well, you know. Hmm.
And that's um, once again, I'm, I like the way that they're not shat away from that.
Yeah, no. Thank goodness.
Because the concern would be going over to America, it would get completely sanitized and the humour would be gone and everything else. And they've managed to keep the same bait and the same level of dark humour that. You know, will love because that's, that's the whole point. It pushes the envelope out. The number, the number of sexual references and that's just to make one scene. You just put Lazlo and Nadia in any scene and it's a hundred percent sexual references and it's like great.
Without a doubt. Oh, absolutely. There's a lot of innuendos in this one, but they're actually quite contained. They're quite good. They're not cheesy. They're not too overdone though. It, it, it adds character to the two of them really.
Yeah, and uh. It doesn't have to be crass, you know, that's the whole point. It's naughty humour and that's, that's what makes it appealing.
They do it so straight face because it's, it's part of who they are, you know, and so it makes them believable, which is really good. Yeah, I like it.
So the whole point of this is they're brought and. So the, the dispense with the whole idea of having to introduce because the film introduced the idea of vampires and they gather in flatmates. So. The sense you just jump straight in, you know.
Yeah.
Guillermo's here to be the point of view character. But he, he's not showing you around all the house, but just get that quickly, which is cool. So that's where this is a bit fresher. It's not going over the same old beats.
Yeah, because I was kind of expecting that to happen. And when it didn't, it was like, oh, okay, that's cool. We've changed direction. That's really good. That, that worked out really well. Yeah.
But just the ladder, they've got the ladder from the Baron. He's coming to visit.
Farah. No, we're going to go into the, I want to open it in that room. It's like, oh, okay, weirdo.
But actually that's making fun of vampire tropes, if you think about it.
Yeah.
Think of vampire movies and I don't mean Dracula, I mean your Underworlds and your sparkly ones and all that. Of this society and we've got rules and uh, it's actually making fun of the game a lot. Where I don't know if you're familiar with it, Vampire the Masquerade.
No.
The role playing game. Okay, there's a role playing game where you get to be a vampire.
Ah.
And let's just say it attracts a certain type of person. And they're not exactly the most stable people.
Right.
Take it to the 10, 11, you know, when they, they do. And they're really, a lot of people that the game attracts, it's a fun game. It really is. You know, you play with superpowers and all sorts, you know. Out there and you play about the, the politics of the vampire society. But the people that attracts just. Don't know when to stop.
Oh, no.
And if you know, this series is making a lot of pokes at those people. And I don't know whether it's intentional or not, but you can see it.
Oh, I wish I'd have known that when I was watching it.
But that's what I mean. It's one of those, if you know, you know.
Yes, okay. Oh. So I'm not missing anything, am I?
No, 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 that's, it's just. And this is what Easter eggs are about.
Is that when the laughing thing comes in?
Yes, because that, there is laughing vampire the masquerade and that's even more batshit crazy.
Yeah.
That's where people actually do buy each other's stuff and like take over each other's homes. Like someone will arrive in a city and somebody's playing the game and take over their house. Like it's legit, honestly, it, it happens.
Oh my god.
Oh yeah, they really do take it to the, you know.
How do I join?
Look for any online playing group and then you'll find something in your area.
I might meet some real vampires.
Oh, there are people that just, they really do have that problem. So it's a bit of fun getting poked at those type of folks.
That's cool.
And the hot topic goths, you know, those as well. Um, and I'm, I'm all for it, you know, it's. Stereotypes come out of somewhere.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I love goths. I'm a goth at heart. Yeah, no, that's really cool. I, I, I like that they can poke fun at people, but, but not being offensive.
I don't know. You don't hear anybody. You're not. You're not being uh, directed towards hitting anybody and that's, that's what people have forgotten today. Poking fun, making fun of folks and playing up the stereotypes. That's all part of, you know. Us bonding as a species. We've always done it.
Yeah, that's right. That's how we get to know who we are and each other and yeah, absolutely.
It actually helps strengthen your resolve. So if disaster does strike, you're a bit more resilient.
Yep.
It's actually a useful tool. The problem today is that nobody, everyone has to be wrapped in cotton wool. And then they can't deal with life, never mind actually a crisis. And it's, it's actually kind of worrying.
It is, isn't it? Hmm. Yep.
Like if people, if something's said online, for example, that's it. That's the end of the world. They will fall to pieces. You're kind of like, really?
Tell me about it. I've met a few of those in my horror group, never mind.
Yeah, you were telling me how the ban button just gets like a workout.
Yeah, god blimey.
That's why I left a lot of writing groups inside because the poison.
They really are, eh? Some of them, you just gotta wonder what, what's going on in their thinking to. Yeah, be that way inclined. The attitudes towards other people are pretty shit.
Yeah, but they're the sort of people who complain about this humour.
Oh yeah, absolutely. You're putting down this person. You're putting down that person and it's like, well, actually that's a mockumentary, you know.
And they don't get the double entendre of the joke that they're making fun of the people, making fun of the people, you know, it's a look in the mirror. It's showing the character of the person that makes fun of the type of person too.
Of the person that's getting triggered.
Yeah.
For what reason? Yeah, because they have nothing better to do than get triggered. Complain about it all day long on Facebook.
But yeah, they're uh, oh, we gotta do this right. And I just love the fact that both Lazlo and Nadia have had sex with the Baron.
Oh, I know. That, that was so great. Oh, I had an affair with him, blah, blah, blah. Oh, I had an affair with him, blah, blah, blah. It was like, oh. He must be pretty hot.
Yeah, more expecting. And that's a setup too, for when the Baron actually arrives, which is hilarious.
I'm expecting um, Amande or someone to put, to, to step out. How wrong was I?
But don't forget, we've got um, Colin in this as well.
Oh yes, Colin.
Oh my god, he is brilliant.
He is fricking amazing. Hmm. If you put glasses on, you might look quite similar actually.
Probably I could, I could find those clothes.
The energy vampire. Hell, I've met so many of those vampires.
Absolutely, um. And that's it. They, they legit do that to you. Like we've all had one of those in the office or workplace and they're just. You do feel exhausted after being in their presence.
God. They just don't shut up, eh? It's just like, oh my god, you're sucking the energy out of me. I can feel it. I'm drained just talking to you. Hmm. I just. Yeah, he's such a cool character. I love the way he looks. When he's, when he's done his deed, you know, when he's, yeah, oh my god, he's just got this brilliant look on his face. I love it.
But that, that's him as well. He's playing it straight and then. That's him letting it out a bit.
Yes.
And showing that he's having fun with the character.
Yes, yes. It's so well done. He's so great. I'm so glad he's in it. He's just cool. He's gonna make this whole thing just so funny. Yeah.
But that's also, it's good for the contrast as well. Because we've had all the golf type vampires, you know, they're all there. So. You need that something different to shake it up a bit. And then obviously the introduction to Colin is just. And then the fact that they're having the secret meetings and hiding from them because it just.
And he's always there. It's just so funny. They're trying to hide from him. He's always there, hiding behind the curtain, walks in the door. He's on to it. He, he's the most intelligent one out of the whole lot.
Yeah, because he knows what he's doing. That's the thing.
Yeah.
It's purposeful. He, he is the way he is because it's a hunting technique.
Yes, yes. I, I really love this show because it's got, you know, the succubus, incubus, and then it's got a. Um, energy vampire. I just think those are just such great little um. Uh, contrasts to vampires, you know, just the different species of vampires. It brings up that sort of element, which is really quite well done. Yeah.
Um, I didn't want to put it, but isn't this the one where uh. Nandor buys the glitter?
Oh, oh god, I love Nando. He loves Twilight.
Is Belle, is Belle gonna get triggered by this? I like, is she gonna get offended?
No, I loved it. I thought that was just a great show. Put some glitter on it, be a sparkly vampire. I was just like, oh my god, yes, Twilight. And I'm like, yeah, he rocked.
Nothing's off the table and I, I just think that's uh.
Well done. Yeah, they had me pissing myself. So good.
I, I just wanted to know your reaction to that. I'm like, oh my god, that's gonna be raging just.
Oh, no.
And then she'll get it.
Yeah, no, I'm not that easily offended. Oh god, hilarious. You're a sparkly vampire. Pathetic. You can never be a sparkly vampire. Oh, well.
Nah, but uh, yeah, they're, they're just going for, you know, nothing's off the table and.
Creepy paper. Let's get some creepy paper, creepy paper.
And the paint on the alligators black when that's actually the alligator's natural colour. It's hilarious.
I know. Oh god. Bloody hell, what were they thinking?
Why did that become a thing? In cartoons to make alligators green?
Yeah, well, they're not. Crocodiles are green, right? Alligators are, are black. Well, blacky, dark green.
Yeah, but they can be different. They can have different colorations and banding, you know, just because of the breed, but they're generally black. They don't. The only thing about, they might be green is that, you know, if they get the moss and it grows on them.
Oh, yes.
The lichen, that would be, but that's part of the camouflage. No turtles do that as well.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah. So again, that was quite comical.
But. Just part of that. Paint everything black because it's expected.
Yeah, everything has to be black. We want a black car and we want black alligators. Aren't they already black dude? Oh dear.
And then of course we've got Guillermo. I've been, I've been doing this for 10 years. It's gonna happen tonight. It's gonna happen.
Yes, get ready. Oh, okay.
Was it, no, it wasn't Jenny. Jenny's in this one. Um, what's her face out of the first one?
Who?
Uh, June, yes, the familiar.
June.
June, yes. Everyone's getting, I have a funny feeling they're gonna play with that joke. You know, everyone's getting turned all around him, but not him.
No.
Was it, was it saying there? As someone who grew up in old comedy sitcoms. It took me a while in the nineties to get winged off the laugh track style of comedies. Now I can't enjoy new comedies any other way. Yeah, it was the whole sitcom thing. I, I never liked sitcoms.
Yeah, no, that was all the Friends and Alan and.
Yeah.
Oh, Jerry Steinfeld and yeah. No, that was the, that was the age of that uh, sitcom rubbish. I never really got the point. It was just a distraction, I think, from real life, you know.
Yeah, but it was never really truly funny. And the fact that they had to have a laughter track to tell you when to laugh.
Yeah.
It just felt so fake.
It, it was fake. It was. It was, I don't know, but they made such a big deal. They were really big. I mean, look at Friends. Hmm.
I think that's part of the whole corporate thing. You know, and that's why people have not, you know.
The machine.
Just churned it all out and all, you can barely discern one from the other.
Yeah.
And.
Oh.
That's where that sort of stuff doesn't fit in. It's, it becomes a niche thing, but then this has longer legs because it'll last longer than. Uh, any of those shows.
Yeah.
Because kids aren't picking those up again and going, oh, this was brilliant. You know, it's only nostalgia from a certain generation.
Yeah.
That watched those, well, maybe harking back, but this sort of thing is something, like you said, 10 years from now. Somebody new, somebody in their twenties could pick this up and still laugh at it because it's just got that. Sort of timeless and appropriate dark humour, which if you get, that, that is timeless.
Yeah, exactly. It's, yeah, there's no comparison really between that and, and American sitcoms. There's absolutely no. This is, this is like you said, this is a niche sort of market. Yeah. I like. You can't watch Friends now and, and get excited about it, right? They do so many reruns. I know. It's like all these reruns and stuff of um, The Simpsons and, and oh god, I don't know, what's that other one? Family. Whatever. It's just, yeah, I'm so glad those days are gone. Well, they are over here anyway. You know, we've just got one stupid shortland street thing and that's about it. Yeah, those, yeah.
Got them. Back in the day.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's good to have something like this, but um, you know, they do put them on quite late at night. But you know, if you've had a quite a long day at work, you start, you know, you got up at five o'clock in the morning and you've got this coming on at 10:30 at night. I suppose people have those things that record. Those things.
Hold on, I don't watch terrestrial TV.
No, no, I don't either. I can't even remember the last time I turned the TV on.
And I realise I've never really, you know, apart from when I was a kid. Because that was it, you know, that was it in the room until I got my own, my own uh, VHS. So I could get my own movies.
Yeah.
I did not like TV. And I still don't.
No.
And the thing is, I don't class this as TV.
No, no, right? It's a show. It's a, it's a show, but it's, it was a TV series, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's a series, but.
It's not in that category, I think you're trying to say, is that?
Yeah.
Ah.
This was something different. This was the change, I think, uh, what Chris was alluding to, from the nineties. The two, you know, the two, this was more, you would have bought the series, you know, it was a DVD box set. I always say these as.
You know, when I think it started, I think it started with True Blood.
Oh god, I, that was.
Yeah, I think that's what broke the mould. Um, especially over here in New Zealand. That was the first thing. Ever to be put on, on TV that had everybody, ah, my god, you've got six scenes and you've got this going on. What the hell? Where's your censorship gone? People complaining. So it's on at 11 o'clock at night. Um. We didn't have anything like that on our TV until True Blood came along.
No, that's true and.
It was so censored until that. Hmm.
And maybe even before that, I would say supernatural. Would be, you know, a more toned down version, but. Uh, no, that was more the serial, you know, starting to go into more of an overland story arc rather than episodal.
Yes.
Serialized TV show. So you've got a season and a season has an entire story arc. Like this is gonna have an entire story arc. But you can kind of see the way that's going.
Yeah.
And this sort of was a change of TV. Now they've completely arsed this up now. Because they've completely melted to death. So they've run out of ideas and they've got all the crap coming on now. Um.
Oh my god.
What was that last one I tried to watch? Resident Evil. They did a, they did a TV show of Resident Evil and I couldn't even make it through the first episode. It was that painfully bad. I mean, it was, and I, and we're talking about the movies were bad, but this show. I couldn't make through the first episode. It just was so disjointed and devoid of anything like remotely resembling entertainment.
Shocking.
And I gave up because I was going to review it, you know.
Yeah.
I have a passionate interest in the Resident Evil series.
Yeah.
But I couldn't even.
Do the TV show. Do the TV show.
Um, what was that? I watched the first season of Chucky.
Was Chucky in a TV series as well?
Uh, three seasons.
Oh, my god. Done?
You're not missing anything.
Oh, my goodness.
I have no desire to watch the second season. There, there was nothing there. It was so sanitized and just focusing on teens and a.
Oh.
Doll slasher, you know. There should have been one-liners and quips and just, it was all flat.
Oh, my goodness.
They wanted to talk about pronouns and stuff instead of actually getting on with a slasher.
Great.
All the fun is out of it.
It's fucking ridiculous. Sorry. It's just ridiculous.
And that's why everything is.
What's going on?
Like, that stuff cannot be made today because it's too edgy and it pokes fun, you know, someone's gonna take offense at it. And that's kind of the point of humor. This dark humor is, nobody's safe, nothing's off the table.
No, exactly.
And we're seeing.
And that's why we love it.
Yeah, and also, you can't call us estrophobes for watching this because we've got everything led on every form of sexual, I like, you know, I mean.
Ah.
If if it's possible to do, Lazo and Nadja have done it.
Yeah.
Or invented it, you know what I mean? So you can't not. And once again, you just have to, if you're a fan of vampire flicks, you just have to read on, right? You can't not. You know, you can't be an estrophobe and not enjoy the material. It's the same as people uh, call you out and then. You can't be a homophobe and be a type barker fan, for example, because that's, you know.
Oh.
But the difference is, these are good storytellers.
Yeah.
And they've actually got something to their character, you know. You know when somebody doesn't have anything on the tank and that's the only thing they've got to talk about?
Yep.
But here we're having sexual humor. Light-hearted, just having fun with it, you know, having fun with the human experience.
Yeah.
And people being made fun of because they follow stereotypes, like when we get to the Larpers. You know, Guillermo has a steady stream of versions.
That's so good.
And you're just like, okay, and sure enough.
Yeah.
We meet Larpers and if you've ever met Larpers, they're not too far from the trade.
I have, yeah.
I went to a, but one of the only time I went on a four-day event. Because we had talked behind the gun. With Larpers and I, I just spent most of it drunk in the tent, because I had to, I had to just get drunk, because I'm like, I can't be around these people. They're doing my head and, you know. And plus, I was, I was all like medieval sword fighting and I was doing martial arts at the time. And these people are like, I'm a level twenty this, and they can't fight. I mean, they literally can't walk from A to B without getting out of buff. They're so out of shape.
Wow.
And then they were complaining and crying because I never even used to attack, I used to just block, you know, you know, that whole, oh. No, it was just that pathetic. And that's not even me, bro, so I'm no great athlete.
People get really into it. They even get really married in front of these people. It's like. Yes, because we have medieval ones here and I know a couple of people that do actually go to these things and they dress up to the max and it's just like. Oh, okay, you've got a very different way of thinking. Okay, so when it came to these laughing, this laughing situation, I was just like. Well, they could be taken one, you know, they could be taken as offensive. But it's not because it's so funny. It's, it's like nobody's safe. Absolutely nobody is safe. There's no way.
Like, if you see people round a table with rolling dice and taking part in a role-playing game. And making fun of them, I'd be like, yeah, that's me, okay. Do you know what I mean? Because I'm in that.
Yeah.
One of the hobbies, so I'll, I'll see all the jokes, not like, yeah, yeah, God, like, you know.
Yeah.
Horror fans, you know, you see the jokes being made about them, like, yeah, yeah, I see that.
Yep, yep, that's true, yeah.
That's what this type of humor does as well. It's, it's light-hearted. It's almost like an inside joke. It's not, like, what we're getting now with supposed humor is an outside nastiness. From people who aren't, you know, it's from the high school bullies that never progressed any further in high school. It's all the ones that. Hate nerds are in the nerd spaces to make money.
Yeah.
And they want the jobs, they want that because they know there's massive amounts of money. And they actually despise the hobbyists.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's why today's humor is not, it's not coming from a place of love or affection. Where you can tell this is, this is almost the inside joke. It's not there like that. It's like, yeah, we're like this, you know.
Yeah.
Filmmakers, you name it, you know, there has to be a bit of nerd quality to want to do this sort of stuff. You have to be, you have to get it or else it wouldn't land.
Yep, absolutely.
What was that stupid one? Uh, god, I think I've tried to watch it. And they just made it into a teen drama. It's about vampires. There's about three or four of them all saying, um.
Oh.
Vampire Diaries.
Vampire, alright. I actually read that whole series, the book, really good for young. A younger audience, great books. But I, I went to watch the first Vampire Diaries and I was like, oh my god, no way. They are trying to copy that, they're trying to copy this show and this show and it was just like, ah, nah, not interested. They ruined the book, the books, the book series, completely ruined it. I didn't like it, so.
Yeah, but that's, that's people that don't get the culture.
No.
So you can't, you can't make anything.
Yeah, so it was Americanized to the max, yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
Never good. And that's a good thing about this. Actually, this is set in America, but it's not Americanized.
That's right.
And I think that's what makes this have legs, because uh, god, there's no series back home called Red Dwarf.
Right.
Do you remember that?
Love that. That was so funny.
And then they tried to, do you remember they tried to make an American version of it?
Yes. That was shit.
Didn't even last one season. Like, I think, did even get, they got the pilot done and I think maybe one or two episodes and then it was like.
And that was it. Yeah, they ruined it.
They didn't get the humor at all. And that was another, we're having, like, we can all identify with Lister.
Yeah?
You know what I mean? We can all adapt. Oh, god, yeah, I've, you know. Sometimes I've just given up on life and beer and curry is the answer, you know, and just. Two or three days, you know, we've all, we've all done that, um.
Yeah.
It's the same as this, but can all, I can identify with Colin, not just the name, but. I can identify that sort of, right, I gotta dress like a normie and I gotta interact with them, but I'm not one of them.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But I'm also not, I'm not gonna sit and be the golf king and amongst the.
No.
The, all, you know. He actually, it's amazing how he's almost my spirit animal, because that's how I feel as a horror fan. Because I don't have all the piercings, all the tattoos, and I don't wear. You know, all the accreditments and I don't wear all the T-shirts.
Yeah.
And I don't say all the same things. I don't feel like I'm part, and I hate the word community, but, you know. I don't feel like I'm part of the horror community, you know.
Which you are, but you're not, you're not, we, yeah, you don't have to wear it, right? Yeah, to.
It's something I try to bring across is that you don't have to be like that. You don't have, wear the uniform.
No, no.
And. At the same time, put me in with a bunch of normies and I am the, I stick out, I'm the square peg in the round hole. You stick me and I am so having to watch what I say and do, because. As you know, I, this is my humor, you know, and I, I am this sort of humor. This is what just has me busting myself in the sofa while. In Normaland, they're freak, they'd be freaking out in comfort to be banned and just getting all up in arms and it's like. What are you getting upset about?
Oh, yes, I know. I know exactly where you're coming from. I often say some silly things. That I think is normal, is not normal in a social environment with other people. They just think I'm absolutely bonkers.
And it's so funny, because you just see the shock in their face. They're like, huh?
I know. Benjamin yesterday, my husband, everyone, is not here at the moment, but he, um, well, I was watching, I was watching the. Um, the second what we're doing, the, the, the county council one, yes. And he's asking me, what is so funny? And I'm like, you just have to come and watch this. It was hilarious. Oh, my god. And he's like, you're so sick. Why is that so funny to you? And I'm like, because it's so funny. Yeah, I guess you, you just have to, I don't know, you're gonna have a specific. Uh, like a dark sense of humor should get horror humor, right?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And even this mockumentary, people who don't like horror are not gonna probably like this.
No, they won't get it. I'll just go straight over their heads.
Yeah, it's either gonna go straight over their heads or they're gonna think that, um, it, it's, it's cliche, it's stereotypical. It's, it's cheesy, it's overdone, and it's like, well, those are all the things that are brilliant about this.
Because it's making fun. It's the second layer of.
Exactly.
It's a, you know, it's a self-aware look at the whole culture and just making fun of it and embracing. What we are, and it's like, yep.
Yeah, and it's seeing what your boundaries are as well, what you find humorous and what you don't, and what you think is. Bordering, I mean, I feel sorry for familiars. I'm sure they're going to start complaining about this movie pretty shortly, you know, poor familiars, hmm. Yeah, it's like to be a familiar for ten years.
That was funny.
Years. Oh, it was ten years, you dick. I've been looking after you for ten years. Oh, oh, all familiars.
Uh, and then we've got the, the whole Jeff storyline, Nadja finds her reincarnated love.
Gregor, Gregor, yes. She's actually very, very good at her accent, except have you noticed it drops? Sometimes she, I think she's a pom, I think she's English. And she have accent slips and she slips into um, into British talking. It's quite funny, but um. Yeah, no, she's a great character, that uh, Jeff, oh my god. Uh, I loved her scaling up the wall. That was really well done, eh? Yeah.
The practical effect, the spatial effects, those are brilliant. They're just seamless.
They are, even them turning into bats. Oh, my god, that was crazy, bat.
This, uh. Just making a whole thing about it and then bumping into stuff.
I know, oh my god, I love it, I love it. I, I haven't seen that before, have you?
Not like, the only one was Lizzie Neeson, um. Oh, god, Darren Dracula dead and loving it.
Oh, right, okay.
That was the only sort of, you know, comedy aspect of turning their bat and bumping into things, but.
Yeah, okay.
You can still see the strings in the bat, you know.
Yeah.
They're doing that.
Nah, yeah, it's brilliant, brilliant, yeah. No, that, I, I like that twist with Jeff Gregor. That he's my ex-partner or whatever. That was so well done.
But they're setting us up, they're setting up storylines, you can tell already, these are gonna be the storylines throughout the series.
Yep, yeah.
So we know it's just not, everything getting wrapped up, episode or one episode, you know, we're getting little things, but.
Yes.
Oh, my god, the baron's coffin and everything, uh. I could have the detailed effort that went into that. That looks brilliant.
Yeah, I know, right? Just that whole thing, um. Yeah, he's, he's a horrible-looking creature. It's seriously not at all what I would have expected. God, I know, he must be like eight hundred thousand years old or something, because he's not looking very good.
I think you're playing that trope, was it the blade, blade that, and underworld? Where, you know, the vampire stays in stupor for so many until it drinks enough.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And, yeah, and the creature effects of the baron himself are just like. Those movies can't do that good.
No, no, right? And he was in actual costume, you know, he's probably, probably took ten hours to put him in there, but, you know, he looked great.
Go up with the Blade Trinity. Do you remember that one?
Yeah.
The Dominic Purcell version of Dracula like that was horrible.
Oh, there've been a lot of bad ones, right? Yeah.
But that, uh, the way he looked in that, you know, his Dracula was just CGI horriblest. Here's a low-budget TV show just going. Blowing them out of the water.
Yeah. Absolutely.
But we know the baron's in trouble anyway, because we see that whole scene where the, the roof tile falls out. What is it about vampires and not being able to darken windows? We saw it in that right one in as well, that all this great thing about using newspapers and stuff to block up windows and making it like really. Uh, where blackout curtains are cheap.
I know.
And why do you have to make it obvious with the wooden, you know, doing the, the plywood outside, like shutters are a thing?
Uh, I don't know, I know, there was just, yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't know, they did the stereotypical shit, isn't it? Yeah.
It's just making fun of it, I think.
There are blackout curtains, guys, and there are things that you can get, roller blinds that completely block out the sun. But I loved your old Lamo, or whatever his name is, just opening the curtain up a little bit and wondering. Should I, should I not?
Yeah, he's like.
My watch, yeah. But the baron's gonna be, um, barbecued meat in the morning.
Yeah, we, it's just all the, it's like, um, you know the slapstick setup with the ladder?
Yes.
And that's, that's what we're getting here.
Exactly. Yeah, well done.
Yeah, and then, uh, of course, Colin needs a virgin's. It's just like, oh, there's no nutritional value left on them, uh. I just think brilliant.
That is brilliant, absolutely. Oh, great.
It wasn't a massively long episode, but still for a pilot, they got a lot in it and they were able to demonstrate that this got, this thing has legs.
Yes, absolutely. Yep, great mockumentary style.
Uh, let's press on. Given the drawbacks, would you both want to be vampires? Uh, nah.
Yes. I wanna get into the Vatican. I wanna go and have a look what they've got in their vaults. So yes, I would become a vampire. And I wanna be invisible and I wanna be able to fly, but I don't wanna drink blood, so maybe I'll drink animal blood. I know I love animals. Maybe I'll be a zombie instead.
That's kind of worse.
Yeah, I know, but.
I know people, I don't think anyone's ever said, I wanna be a zombie. I know people dress up as for fun, but I don't think, I think that's the worst thing you could be.
But then I wouldn't have to eat people alike, right? I'd just walk around being.
Yep, you have to eat people, you have to eat their brains.
I think there are some intelligent zombies somewhere in the world.
Please don't say warm bodies, because that film was an abominable.
And no, Chris, I would not want to be a vampire, definitely not.
Once again, the whole, uh, the whole societal thing, you know. Do you know what really put me off about the idea of even entertaining being a vampire was underworld?
Underworld?
Yeah.
Why?
What do they do all day? They hang about a mansion posing.
Right.
That's their life. They all live together. You know, they're all on each other's faces all day and they're all, they don't go off and do their own things. They're all like part of this, like. Worker be hive thing and they don't actually have any purpose.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, absolutely.
If I can't do that with living flesh and blood people, that would drive me mental.
Yeah. Yeah.
That would legit drive me.
Stuck with vampires for the rest of your lives to talk to, what would be the point? It'd be, oh, you'd just be waiting, could somebody please just pull my head off, please?
I wonder about, here's a nice sunny day, you know.
Yeah, exactly. No suicide by cop, just open up somebody's window, so somebody's curtains, just like that.
Yeah, I couldn't, uh, couldn't be annoyed.
Yeah, no, really, I could not. I could not be a vampire. Plus, I would want to see all their family members die and, you know, all your friends and you live too long. It's like, eh. Good question, though.
Yeah, um, that's that all, but then.
Unless I was married to Edward.
Uh, but then you'd have to have a. Uh, but then you'd have to have a personality, personality actomy, because look what he's into. You have too much personality for Edward.
Yeah, I think so.
You had to be sultry, brooding, um.
Yeah. Damsel in distress. No thanks.
Have you seen the shit she's come off of? Like, that actress is even worse than her character.
She's bonkers. She's got her life completely tipped upside down. She's got no idea what the hell she is.
Well, she's trying to get relevance and she doesn't know how to get it because she has basically no personality.
And she can't act for shit.
No, that's, I still don't forgive Cameron for that, making me, talking me into watching that movie. Yeah, check out my uh underwater, was it underwater? Yeah, underwater review, oh my god.
Is it underwater?
Underwater, yeah. Something Kristen Stewart plays the main character and that. And we start off with her monologuing and then it's supposed to be a Cthulhu-inspired, you know. A bit like the abyss, but Cthulhu-inspired and it's none of those things.
Oh, god.
She is horrendous.
Oh, shit.
And my review was just me spending half the time calling Cameron names for stitching me up. That was my review. Fuck you, Cameron. Thanks. Some friend you are.
Oh, he's a great friend, isn't he? Oh.
Uh, still, I still, I still find it hard to forgive him for that.
Oh, get over it. God blimey.
Will you watch it then?
I will, I will. And I bet I'll hate it just as much. Oh, you've got some nice friends.
You just love, you just love poking. I mean, you can deal with the fine footage stuff as well. You love it.
Oh, absolutely.
He's not gonna get me going, it's like, oh, oh, why are you doing this to me? And you're laughing.
Love to wind you up.
It's all good. Ah, anyway, city council, this was, not much happened in this episode, but it was still funny.
Yes, yes. It's a good one.
Um, the weird comment at the start, Guillermo's accent, uh, don't your accent spooks me? And I'm like, huh? What was that?
Is it cause it's an American accent? Yeah, so is it like Kiwi's taking the piss out of Americans in an American country?
Why not? You may, if you're gonna do it, you may as well go world.
Cause this was, this was in Ameri-, uh, this was filmed in America, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eh, I, I wouldn't have believed it, really. I wouldn't have believed it was actually filmed in America. But I know it, I know it was, but um, yeah, I don't know, just the humour was so much different. Than what I'm used to seeing coming out of America.
I think cause the house is contained, that's the whole point. They're out of the world.
Yes.
Uh, and if they had have done completely Americanized it with the household, it would have ruined it. But they're from the old world, they've come, they haven't actually changed or evolved and. Yeah, now they have to figure out how to take over Staten Island because that was the, the baron had given them the orders.
Yes.
And a couple of hundred years they haven't delivered, cause it's just been nerds and now they have to come good in their promise.
Oh, no, woo, it's gonna be fun.
And then they they forgot the orders because, what was it, Nadja saying? Oh, I couldn't pay attention because the baron was paying attention to that certain area. I'm like, oh my god.
I know.
And.
It's like, those two must have been together for so long, Laszlo and um Ninja. For them to be able to be so blasé about their, you know, escapades in the past.
But they just wear it on their sleeve, you know, and that's part of their character, but they still have character.
Oh, they do.
Today's current sexual identity folks' wisdom could be.
Yes.
Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
The ones that do it have no personality and they're compensating, where these guys are play, just embracing the characters, just part of who they are.
Exactly right.
And that's why.
They're not offending anyone, no, well.
Well, someone will look for a way.
Somebody's gonna be.
Offence is taken, not given.
Oh, no, I just gotta get rid of the sun.
Yeah, pesky sun with a vampire stuff.
The sun is burning me. Yes, I love her character. I think she's pretty cool.
Yeah, and then, yeah, it's Colin, the rescue, he's like, I know where, how you can do it and.
Yes, oh, Christ.
And Colin won't tell him where it is because he knows they'll leave him behind.
Yeah, yeah. That was good. That was great in the car ride. Bat! He was boring them to shit. I will meet you there, Colin. Bat!
And then they're all sitting on top of the bus.
Yes, I know, that was so well done, I loved it. Something about not hitting a bridge.
It seems like that though are so quick and they look effortless, but you know that that, there's been a load of work being put into that, like one scene. Like a group of people on top of a bus while it's driving and getting, you you know that there's been tons of work.
Yes.
To make that look authentic.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
And uh.
Great.
That that's what enders me to the show, because you know the stuff behind the scenes, they're taking it seriously, the what to make a good show.
Yeah, yep, um, which is a lot, you know, we're lacking a lot of that nowadays. So it's quite, it's quite refreshing to know that there's, there's still things out there like this particular, you know, series that. It's good, it's really good, even what, eighteen, what are we, six years later? Oh my goodness, it's brilliant.
And that's, you know, stuff like I says, timeless, like you said. Because if you get it right and it looks right and the humour's right.
Yeah.
It's when you put stuff at a specific period of time, like if a set, you know. Uh, what was it? Like during the pandemic or during a certain election or, you know, during a certain event in history. If it's like tied into that, then it's always gonna age, where, like I said, they could step out the front door and it could be twenty fifty. And they'd still be the same bumbling lunatics. I'd still have no clue about the world.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's it, um, but I love the way they go to the city council and. They're so wrapped up and it's just, it's a wee poke at civil servants, which I don't mind.
Yes.
They're so wrapped up in their rules and regulations and that and following procedure that they don't even battle an eyelid when. A vampire essentially just turns up and goes, you will obey me, you will come under my rule.
I know, right? Oh my god, an ancient vampire stands up and nobody even says bats. You see bats, pun, um. You know, doesn't even bat an eyelid at this ancient-looking crazy person standing up telling, threatening them all. What? What's going on? Are they that far detached from reality or are they that, I don't know, that they they just don't even notice? The the vampires in the back row. Are they just the goths from down the road?
Yeah, probably, that's what they're thinking.
The young ones, the young ones. I used to laugh there. These guys kind of remind me of the young ones, however, in in a vampire setting.
Yeah, that's, that's what makes it relatable, like I said, it's, there could be us, there could be students, there could be any, you know. There's that universal comedy of misfits.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
That rings true and any, you know, those of us that get it, it it sort of rings a bit of a truth in us and you're like, oh dear, I I recognize too much of myself here. Oh dear.
Yeah, right.
That's what, that's a bit that makes you kinda cringe and go, oh, oh dear, that's a bit close to the knuckle. But once again, because it's done with good humour and not nastiness, you can tell the difference.
Absolutely, without a doubt. Yeah, they're just, it's just a mock of everything and everyone, and I think that that should be allowed to happen. Why can't that happen nowadays, you know?
Well, the only ones that do it now are uh Trey Park, you know the guys that write South Park?
No, no, South Park.
South Park.
Oh, South Park, oh, South Park. Oh my god, hasn't that gone to trouble a few times?
Yeah, but that's what I mean, they're the only two that uh still write that style, that nothing's off the table. And everything's just there to be made fun of and it's not really taken aside. It's just, here's a bonker situation, we're gonna make fun of it, cause it's good material.
Yeah, but then again, you know, they hyped that stuff up with South Park, you know? I mean, I I love the Kenny thing, um, but you know, some of the controversial things they have done, they've they've just. I don't know, it's like, they've done it deliberately for controversy, whereas say this isn't done for.
I I don't know, because they're, they've always been consistent and I stopped watching years ago, but they've always been consistently like that, you know.
Yeah.
Every episode, it's just that today people want to fight about it and I think it gets overblown, but I think that those two. Are the closest we've got to just genuinely consistent comedians that just make fun of everything. When you think of everything else being so, like The Simpsons you brought up.
Yeah.
I have not watched that show in years, I thought it'd finished.
Yeah, now they're constantly doing bloody reruns.
So, you know, I mean, there's, that was a nothing.
Yeah.
Family Guy's another one, once you get, once it does the same five or six jokes.
Yeah.
It's very repetitive, you know what I mean? Shows like that are mainstream milquetoast, just trying to be edgy, but they're not.
And they age.
They age, yeah, cause they're topical, they're current, you know, the current moment.
Yep, yeah.
Um, I think South Park has, falls victim to that too, but also has longer legs, cause some of his other stuff is a bit timeless.
That's true, that's true.
But they're mainstream shows.
Yep.
With a wee bit of an edge to them for the normies, where this just goes all in and. Like with normies, the humanness won't land, they just won't get it.
No, no, they won't get it.
But people that do get it just are all in, you know, it's, I think it's just one of those shows, you're all in or you're just baffled.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think you could turn around and and dislike this for any particular reason. Other than you don't like vampires or you don't get the humour, you know, cause it's brilliant.
Yeah, but that's fair enough, but like like I said, the people that wouldn't get that then would just be baffled by this going, what is this?
Yeah, yeah, what's the point in it and, yeah.
But this is a wee. Yeah, it's a poke at nerd culture in general, you know what I mean? That's what it is, it's a nerdy film, nerdy series for nerds.
Yeah, it is.
And just.
Maybe that's why we like it so much, cause there's such big fat nerds, dudes, so we do. I don't care.
Like, for vampires, like these, these people are napped, they're just, don't have a gleam.
They're absolutely stupid. The most intelligent one out of the lot is bloody Colin.
He understands how the world works and he's carved out his little bit and he just moves amongst amongst them and gets what he needs.
I mean, he's even working, you know, he even goes to work and, yeah, yeah, I think this, he's a cool character. Yep, and everybody knows Colin.
And this is his entertainment, going to the council meetings, the sucky energy of them and he goes and gives his little speech every week.
Every week.
On the topic of whatever they're talking about, I just.
What kind of life was, oh my god, what kind of a life is this dude living?
But he's also the greatest comedian, cause he gets it, he gets the joke of the lives and he's actually. He's not taking part, he's ever killing them.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It feeding of them, yeah, especially the, towards, oh my god. Oh, when he causes all that, when they cause that fuss. And then he's like, like totally loving the energy in the room.
I can't, I can't sit up right now, if you know what I mean, I'm a bit excited.
See, it's not even crass, it's it's hilarious, unless there's something wrong with us.
We'll, we'll know that, that's, that's a given.
Yeah, but don't admit it.
I just go with it. Own what you are, you know what I mean, no problem.
Yeah, I know, but weird.
That's the first step to having this, isn't it? Just go, yeah, that's me, so what, do with it.
You're right, I accept it.
Um, the camera crew were interested in this episode because they just set up the. First of all, Jenna, Nadja decides she's go, she's taking a liking to Jenna.
Yes.
And of course, they go on a date and the camera crew sat up there. And then, of course, the camera crew just arrive at Jenna's, uh, what is she, in a bedset or a flat or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Student house.
It's a little, yep.
Something like that anyway, and then you wouldn't think that's strange, oh, camera crew would just wanna document this, document what? I'm just feeling a bit sick, you know. Totally not getting this, it's been turned.
Yeah, I don't know what the camera crew were doing there, very strange.
But I think that's part of the joke as well, making fun of the genre, the documentary, you know, the the camera crew always turn up. And especially the American stuff, the American stuff actually, the reality TV stuff is actually staged, they do have lines.
Yes, yes.
Guy I used to know, he did, uh, what was it, cars and stuff, getting them made up and that and, uh. He actually showed behind the scenes footage of them repeating the same line about six times.
Oh my god.
I wonder why that stuff's painful to bloody watch.
Wow.
It it's scripted and they think they're doing, um, what do you call that, Eddie Ramsey?
Oh, Gordon Ramsay.
Yeah, his show in America that, you know, in, uh.
Scripted?
Yeah. The British version was a bit more real because there was actually a purpose behind it, it was because of the two thousand eight uh economic downturn and a lot of businesses were closed. So there's actually a purpose behind it, but the American one is just pure scripted reality TV.
That's interesting.
And all them shows are like that. And I think this is making fun of that as well.
It it had to have been, right?
Well, the camera crew outside Doug's house.
Well, exactly. Yeah, while he's getting spoken to by Zander, Zander, yeah, the ether, fuck, it was great.
They're almost like, did you call? No, I'm speaking to Doug through ether. All right, well, if you need, you know.
No, so good, so good, oh my god. Doug, and then he, when he goes crazy at the meeting, oh my god.
It's like he's possessed and that's, that was obviously the scene where he's so much.
There's the security guard trying to put him on the, on the ground and, oh my god, that was so good. Yeah, they've got better powers than I think we we know at the moment. Yeah, I think we're just getting to 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 dabble in what sort of powers they're capable of.
Yeah, that's, I think that's like, they're talking back to the heyday when they ruled empires and stuff, but they've just decided to chill out. And not care and they've got wrapped up in all that basic stuff. And they've sort of set apart from normal, but who hasn't done that? How many people do you know that have the ability that if they wanted to, could rule, you know, could go into politics, could do this and that, but they don't care?
Yeah.
Because once, uh, if they find their little niche or they're happy, they don't need it. You know, there's people that could have power but don't seek it whatsoever.
Yep, that's absolutely true, hmm. Or they don't, they don't know, they have the ability to be able to do things like that, you know.
There's no desire to do it.
No desire, no, no, just get stuck in the little bubble of, you know.
But they're the dangerous people.
Hmm.
Because if you push them that they have to do something, then they're the ones that, you know, everybody's pelt.
Yeah.
It's, it's when, and that's what, kind of where we're going now with society, because the frigging freaks are pushing. The ones that wanna be left alone and have always stepped out of stuff and didn't get involved, but they're leaving them nowhere else to go and. I think we're starting to see it in the nerd space, because you've got people who will obsess, you know, like the LARPers and role players and that. That people will obsess over stuff and the more you poke and poke, they're gonna look at their rules, they're gonna look at the game and then they're gonna play it. Like, right, and it'll be frightening, and then be sorry you did.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
But yeah, just, I would say this is innocent humour, but it's not, it's stark humour.
It's not innocent, no.
But there is an innocence, innocence to it.
There is, because of the, um, I think the naivety of the, of the characters, they're quite. I think that helps, it helps it because they, they seem so serious. So when they're, when they're giving off their, um, you know, their their rants or whatever and their, their comical, their comical lines and that. They're so serious. their comical, their comical lines and that, they're so serious, that it's just like, it's so funny that, but they maintain that, that naivety, it's almost like they're very, they might be like ancient, but they're not very smart. They're not very onto it. I think they've got powers that we don't know about yet, but I don't know, I just, I think they're great, all of, you know.
The whole nutty professor thing, isn't it? The opposite man to professor.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Because these people are like, oh, like sure, remember at the very start about the whole finisher, finish your meal before you start the next one, it's unhygienic, you know?
Yes, yes. Oh my god.
Crawled about. These are, they are killing people by the tens every week.
Every week, leaving them in the basin.
And all over the show and by rights, this, every, you know what I mean? They should have already had a SWAT team or, you know, an armed, the, the doors should have been kicked in already.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we'll lose the how powerful they are, but they're just so like ambivalent about it.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they don't care, cause they could do whatever they want, right?
And that's, that's kind of scary in itself, you know, just being that, you know, um, uh, bodies everywhere, you know, and, ah.
Yeah, yeah. And poor Geralamo having to, um, cart it, ca- ca- get them out of the house, dragging them out of the house. Yeah, really well done, cause they're not gonna clean up after themselves, are they?
No, that's.
Cause they're in a flapping situation, so. Yeah. They're like college students.
Yeah, that's, that's why, uh, that's good, uh, comparisons, like the young ones and all, you know, it's, that's our sort of humour.
It is, it is.
Humour today.
No, I mean, they, even the young ones had some very bad things happen and, but, you know, it's genius. I love the young ones. I just, there's just something about them that I, I always, always loved and and I think this is kind of, yeah, it's kind of, it really does remind me of that, um, but a group of vampires, yeah.
Yeah, it's that sort of humour, which is universal and we can all latch on to it, we can all laugh at it and
Yeah.
It can always push the boundaries, like, oh god, you know?
Yeah. I, I bet you, if I watched the young ones now, I would still be laughing at it. Yeah, because they, you know, their antics were just so brilliant. Yeah, so these guys are, yeah, kind of replaced them now and, and, and quite a nice way. Um, great.
Yep, but there you go. That was fun. That was fun to get started. And also, I think it's good, the fact that we're mixing things up. We're not just sticking with the one series so we can uh, not get burnt out, if that makes sense, cause there's a couple of seasons of this, um. Do you think we'll do three episodes?
Yeah, well, yeah, three, I reckon definitely.
We could, could, well, that's, yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. Same with Wellington Paranormal.
Yeah, but if it bumbles up to three episodes, then that's.
Yeah.
Cause they're, they're, they're quick, but they're, they wouldn't need to be longer, you know, they'd get just enough in and enough of a storyline that, uh, it's compelling.
Yeah, and it's enough for people to wanna go and watch it, hopefully, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah, cause obviously, anyone, uh, folks that are tuning in, we always, uh, post these streams up, you know, I mean, they're up on the website beforehand, so you know what episodes we're gonna cover. If you check the description, I always put the name of the episode, so you can queue them up, watch them before come on and then, uh, join in.
Yeah.
It's kind of fun, so, yeah, we'll do that, yeah.
Sure.
So there you go. Fun times, uh, glad, glad getting to revisit this again. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah.
But as always, though, thanks for coming on. It's always great, uh, having a laugh, the chat and it's technically still New Zealand humour, even though it's, uh, because it's still got the same, same rider, same vibe, you know, it just changed the location, which is cool.
Yeah, absolutely.
Obviously tread too far from the path, but there you go. Uh, that's another one done, uh, just as I say, come up to the, the channel, do the type of tricky things and remember to keep it creepy, keep it horrific.